Here. Everyone could please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart. And if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. It takes us to the first item on the agenda today, the adoption of the agenda. And I know we all had some questions come up over the weekend. And I think it would be beneficial for us to review this agenda item a little more in depth than we normally do. I do also want to take a moment at this time to just reacquaint everyone with why we're doing this meeting in this format that we are. We are conducting an electronic meeting in accordance with Virginia's State of Emergency and the local emergency ordinance that we adopted. In doing that, the meeting has been noticed and instructions have been given on how to participate electronically or by registering comments by mail, email, or over the phone in advance of this meeting. So there will be opportunities for public comment in that period and the public hearing portion of the meeting as well. During this meeting, things do tend to move at a little slower pace because the electronic format necessitates things being navigated by roll call. So those are why we're doing the things that we're doing and how we're doing them. And Mr. Curry, please let me know if I've missed any important details there.
No, ma'am. The most important point is that the meeting is being conducted pursuant to the emergency ordinance that you adopted on April 6th. That provides for the continuity of government.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curry. I just wanted to take a minute to go through this agenda. And my apologies to my fellow board members. There's been a lot of discussion, I know, over the weekend over what we need to consider essential versus non-essential. And I think, Mr. Curry, for also going through these items over the weekend. And I just wanted to start off the discussion and then look to each board member for your thoughts as we work through this agenda today, as it's very challenging to rethink in this state of emergency. Going based on the memo that you generated over the weekend, Mr. Curry, when it comes to our supplemental appropriations, when I reviewed the details for that particular item, it occurred to me that the only one that we could really, I think, undertake today is the Child Services Act fund appropriation. Would you tend, I mean, that was based on your memo, Mr. Curry? Would you agree with that? That everything else could possibly wait or be addressed at an open meeting and wait until that date or be addressed with other budget lines?
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Goff and I spoke about this this morning. And I concur with your analysis that only the Children's Services Act appropriation is required at this time.
Okay. So when it comes to that particular consent agenda item, I guess we'll pull that out of the consent agenda and do that as a one-off. And would that be, well, it looks like all we have other than that is the accounts payable. So we could do those votes as one-offs today. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then we have an insurance provider discussion on the agenda today. I just want to ensure before we take that up as essential business in today's agenda that the deadline on that is the end of May, correct?
We must provide notice 30 days in advance of the end of the period. We did pull the member agreement that was last signed in 2014 earlier today and confirm that that is in fact a requirement. It would be most appropriate to do that after advising the public that that's your intention at a regular meeting as opposed to a budget work session, which you have a couple planned. So, Mr. Goff and I believe today is the most appropriate time for the board to handle that.
Okay. So your advice and Mr. Goff's concurrence is to leave the insurance provider discussion on the agenda today?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Beth.
Very good. Under new business, there are three items I wanted to discuss there before we adopt the agenda. What is the review and consideration of the broadband request from Rappahannock Electric Cooperative? While I think, you know, in talking to my peers, we all agree that this is a very important and timely measure to undertake, I wonder if they will be offering another extension or is this something that we need to deem essential into today as well?
Yes. It's our understanding that, of course, the original deadline was April 15th. It was extended to May 15th. That May 15th date was selected by REC because of their scheduled board meeting that will be, I believe, on about March 20th, or May 20th, sorry. That board meeting of REC will, staff from REC will be briefing the board on what participation may be available through, from localities on broadband. And the input there will drive the REC board's decision to apply for or not apply for federal grants, which are due in June. So it occurs to me that if the Board of Supervisors wants to signal their interest to participate with REC, you have to do it before their imposed deadline of May 15. And it's my opinion that this would be most appropriate during a regular meeting rather than a budget work session, a regular meeting where the agenda was properly advertised and citizens knew you were going to or planning to talk about this.
Thank you. So it sounds like your recommendation is to undertake that business today?
Yes.
And I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Goff is in agreement with that assessment?
Yes, ma'am. I think that if the opportunity were missed, that there could be irrevocable harm to the public interest in losing the opportunity to get broadband, which we've been trying to get for some time. So given the small amount of action that needs to be taken, I think it is still appropriate, even under these emergency conditions, not to let the opportunity to provide broadband to Rappahannock County pass.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. That takes us to new business item three, which is the purchase award for the NICE logging recorder for 911 and public safety radio system. I guess the same questions apply here. Is that something that we have any possible clauses in the contract or any extensions possible where it would be something we would want to defer to another meeting or should that be considered essential business for today?
It is my opinion that it should be considered essential. This equipment is needed to record the audio from the 911 call handling system as well as the radio system. And in particular, this system is being implemented to accommodate the radio system, which is planned to go live on or about June 30th. It's critical that the order be placed so that it can be processed and with all luck be installed before that go-live date.
Yes, ma'am. I think this piece of equipment would be incompatible with the current system, which will be offline at the end of June in order to actually make this piece of equipment operational. I think there is some lead time that's needed from what I understand. And so I believe this item is necessary for continuous to the operations of the public body, well, in general, as a public safety matter.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. I do appreciate your assessment of that. And so it sounds like the recommendation from staff would be to consider this also essential business for today and to go ahead and move forward with that agenda item. That takes us to the last agenda item for today, J4, the addendum item, new business to consider the request by Amistville Volunteer Fire Rescue to redesignate return funds. And again, this is something that I think is very critical and we need to get these monies back to the company. But it seemed like from the memo I received over the weekend that we would have a hard time justifying this as essential business because there is in fact a substantial fund to operate out of at this time.
My opinion is that, independent of whether it's a good idea to set, to return the funds to Amistville, very well may be a good idea to do that, and the board may think that. I think it's difficult to say that the timing is critical and of the essence, given the excellent financial condition of Amistville, and we're very fortunate that that's the case, which to me implies that these dollars for capital, not operating for capital, could be put off to a later date when the public could be here in person to provide their input.
So that would be, and did Mr. Goff, do you concur with that assessment?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I don't think that the timing of that is necessary to continue the operations of the public body or statuteually required or that the public interest would be irreparably harmed. So I think because it is a capital issue and not an operating issue, it could be, you know, hopefully taken up in June when the public hopefully will be here.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. So it sounds like we are looking at that, hopefully for next meeting, which would, which will hopefully be an open meeting in June, to take up item J4, new business, the addendum item to return monies to Amistville. At this time, I guess I should make a motion so for purpose of this discussion, we can start to navigate this agenda. I would move that on the consent agenda, that we adopt this agenda with the following changes, that on the consent agenda, we address items two and three as separate items instead of, in the consent agenda format, so we can address the changes to supplemental appropriations portion of that agenda. I would suggest that we keep old business item I2, the insurance provider discussion, based on county attorney recommendation that an extension or any way to navigate that discussion is possible, that we really need to undertake that business today. And similar to that, that under the J items, new business, we need to undertake J2, the request from the Rappahannock Electric Cooperative for broadband, an addendum item for the NICE logging recorder for 911 public safety radio system, that we include that addendum item in the agenda, but that we remove the addendum item for the consideration for the designation of funds to the Amistville Volunteer Fire Department. And with that, I've talked far too much, and I want to hear from my peers on the board at this time. Mr. Parrish, did you have any questions or concerns?
No, but if I have a motion, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Whitson?
I'm fine with the analysis that Mr. Curry just walked through. I think it sounds clean and I think it's a good exercise. We should continue to do that with our future agendas as we go through this, with the ordinance period. So thank you both for that.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson, Ms. Donahue.
I'm in agreement with everything that you've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me talk so long. Mr. Frazier?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Mr. Curry, were there any other agenda items that were of concern that you think we should pull out or Mr. Goff at this time? It seemed to me that that hit all the notes that we had
I think
had possible concerns over.
Yeah, your list is the same as mine.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. And with that, I have a motion and a second, and so I will move through the roll call vote. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you all for bearing with me through the adoption of the addendum. That takes us to item C1, the school report from the superintendent. It looks like she has reported reports. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Curry?
No, ma'am. Just provided for board and public consumption at the time that it was appropriate for them.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item D1, the public hearing, the emergency ordinance to effectuate temporary changes in response to COVID-19. Mr. Curry, if you could walk us through that agenda item, please?
Yes, ma'am. As the board is aware, you adopted an emergency ordinance on April 2nd and readopted that emergency ordinance with minor changes on April 6th. That ordinance is effective pursuant to Code of Virginia 15.2, 1427-F, for a maximum of 60 days. And that is because you adopted it without going through the public hearing process with proper advertisement in a newspaper to the public. So to continue the items within the emergency ordinance, advertise today is an ordinance that is essentially parallel and has the same action items and content as the emergency ordinance, it just is converted from emergency ordinance to just a regular ordinance. And you're doing that, you continue to do that pursuant to the authority granted by Code of Virginia, Section 15 to 1413. And when you adopt ordinance pursuant to Section 1413, they can be effective for a maximum duration of six months after the end of the emergency. So this ordinance as well, if adopted today, will have a clear sunset date. They will end six months after the emergency ends or earlier if the board takes action to rescind it, which too would have to happen through the normal process to adopt or amend ordinances, which would be advertise a public hearing, hear from the public, and then vote to rescind it. The ordinance is attached to the board docs for all to see. The notice in the paper as well as the documentation on our board docs portal identify the ways through which citizens could provide their input, by email to the admin email address through close of business last Friday, by calling my office and leaving, talking to somebody or leaving a message through the closed business last Friday. And the comment may be available if the technology works out during this time period. I can tell you that we received no comments pursuant to numbers one and two by email or by phone. And when the board is ready to open the public hearing, we can use the online portal to determine whether any citizens want to provide comment now.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. That takes us to the public hearing portion of the program. If anyone wishes to speak, since we received no replies via email or any calls to the county administrator's office, at this time, you will be able to participate via the Zoom platform. The same rules that apply to meetings in person at the courthouse apply to the hearings online as well. Please identify yourself in the district in which you reside, and we ask that you keep your comments under five minutes, please. And on this platform, you'll go up to the upper right-hand side of your screen. There's three dots up there, and in the drop-down below the dots, there will be an option to raise your hand. If you click Raise Your Hand in that drop-down, the moderator, Mr. Curry, and myself will be able to see that you wish to participate in the meeting, and he will unmute your mic, and you can be recognized and participate in the meeting. At this point, if anyone wishes to speak, please raise your hand. And if anyone wishes to speak, all you need to do is go up to the three dots in the upper right-hand side of your screen where there's an option under More to raise your hand. And if you should click that option in the drop-down, your mic can be unmuted and you can participate in the meeting online. I don't see that we have any takers, Mr. Curry.
No, I don't see any either.
And with that, I would declare the public hearing closed. And just to confirm, we received nothing by any other means, Mr. Curry?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. What action are you looking to come out of this portion of the meeting today since we've already undertaken this without a public hearing?
You, this is like any other ordinance amendment that the board may, ordinance adopted the board may take. There is the actual ordinance document on board docs, and a board member would have to move to adopt this ordinance in the form presented on board docs and has the standard voting matrix indicating how ordinance is loaded. So you need a motion and a second to adopt and then a vote following the discussion, if any.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Do I have a motion in regards to this ordinance?
This is Akir Whitson, Hampton District representative. I will make a motion that we adopt the continuity of operations ordinance as amended on April 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Do I have a second?
Ms. Debbie Donahue, I would second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. I would go around the table for a roll call vote. Mr. Frazier?
Before you do that, I just want to be clear with the motion that it is for the document that is presented on board docs that is in fact consistent with what was done on the 6th, particularly relative to this section. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Is there any other discussion? It makes it a little difficult to have discussion in this roll call format, but if anyone does have any concerns, I do think now we should address them. I would just say, in reviewing this, I noticed that it seems like we have some leeway as to what kind of business we can conduct under Section 2. And I just noticed some of the localities around us are undertaking more work, which I know is challenging, given the small staff that we have. But I noticed Warren and Culpeper counties are still undertaking planning and zoning work, and I would just urge that if there's any way we can move forward through that discretionary work, I think that we should. There's just no telling how long this may go on, and there's things like the special exception for the Millers. I really would like to see some of that move forward. And I would just ask staff to look at what neighboring localities are doing and if that might be applicable to how we're conducting our business as well.
Yes, and we've taken a fairly conservative approach, not wanting to, wanting to transact as little business in this format that is more difficult for citizens to be involved. The recent language adopted by the governor that modifies public meeting law through HB29 may free us up a little bit, and Mr. Goff and I can review that in detail and bring some information back to the board on whether that may allow us to move some of those land use items forward.
Thank you. I would be most appreciative. I don't know how the other board members feel about it, but I feel like there is public work that we can do, then we should move it forward.
We would certainly just like to meet in person.
Me too. Any other comments from other board members about this?
Ron Frazier here. I personally would like to see us start trying to, you know, at least have some of these committees working. We never had more than 10 people at any of those committee meetings anyway.
I mean, I agree wholeheartedly, and as I think I said, I was surprised when I looked at some neighboring localities and saw the amount of work they're able to undertake. I know that there is a lot of opinion and, you know, you have to have a leg to stand on when you do those kinds of things, but if there is a way to, for us to move some things forward, you know, as long as this drags out, the more advantageous I believe that would be.
Madam Chair, this is Akir Whitson.
Yes, Ms.
Yeah, I would just bifurcate the analysis and say that part of it is within the bounds of what we're permitted to do. At a time like this, not meeting in person, what's okay and what's not under the law? And within the parameters of FOIA, that's the first question. We really are limited in our ability to do things electronically, and as you pointed out, it starts to become a problem in making land use related and other decisions, then maybe we need to buttonge a little bit. And then I would say that the second part of the discussion should be public health and safety. Obviously, we're seeing an increase in the death rate in Virginia from COVID-19. We're seeing a steady increase in cases. We're seeing a steady increase in cases in Rappahannock County. So I don't know that now is the time to be talking about relaxing how we're conducting our work, but I'll have an open mind. But I just think we have to think about it from those two perspectives.
Well, a lot of what I did see going on in adjoining counties was online meetings or electronic platforms.
Yeah, right. So if we can expand the, if we can expand the scope of what we're handling and we're not, I mean, follow FOIA, then I'm fine with that. And then it's just a question of whether, whether we would want to or need to get it together as committees or as this board or any other public body, so. as committees or as this board or any other public body, so.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, I will go ahead and take the roll call vote. This is regarding the public hearing. We have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the emergency ordinance to effectuate temporary changes in response to the COVID-19 pandemic as originally presented on April 6th. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to the public comment portion of this meeting.
Miss, I see that Dr. Karchner has joined us. And I meant to mention at the very beginning of the meeting that the board may want to shift around agenda items and the COVID update to this point. And so you can have a dialogue with Dr. Karchner and not hold him from his other important work. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
As Dr. Karchner has drawn us on the line, thank you, Mr. Curry. We have that now positioned at Item I, 3, the COVID-19 update. Do I have a motion to move that up to above, I guess it would become Item E1, or above Public Comment and make Public Comment Item E2?
So move Ron Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Do I have a second?
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Akir Whitson.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you all, and thank you, Dr. Karchner, for joining us today.
I have unmuted Dr. Karchner's mic.
Can you hear me very well? Because the mic on this computer is not perfect.
It's pretty good, actually.
Okay. Just to give a brief summary of where we are, what we're planning with here.
Unfortunately, you're fading in and out, sir.
Yeah. You can't, it's a way out, you don't.
Yes, there are call-in numbers provided on the front page of the agenda. You dial one of those numbers and it'll drop you right in.
Okay. On the line. But let me try.
Okay.
Joining us for the Board of Supervisors meeting, please bear with us for a moment. We're having a bit of technical difficulty.
And Dr. Karchner?
Yes?
When you, have you dialed in? I need to know which phone line you're coming from so I can select it appropriately.
It is the 458-206-3848. That's the number.
Were you able, were you able to, oh, yeah. I just need to make the last couple digits of yours. So are you connected by phone?
Yes. It's 6273 is my.
It sounds like you, were you able to link up and save it with you? So you've tied in and everything is working seamlessly. So you can proceed. Maybe. All right, I think, Dr. Karchner, you can just go ahead and speak into the phone. It should work just fine.
Okay. So as a brief summary for Virginia, there are 19,492 cases with 684 deaths. Our Health District has 397 cases with seven deaths. Rappahannock County has seven cases and no deaths. Those numbers are what were reported out this morning. Someone asked a question about Chatham-Dillon National Park. And I'll give you, I discussed, called the acting superintendent of the park on Friday. And he says he has contacted all of the Health Districts surrounding the park and tells me that they are planning, undergoing planning for a phased reopening. And this, their estimation would start with opening Skyline Drive and date camping from Skyline Drive, and specifically not opening trailheads and parking areas in the surrounding county areas in that first phase. When that first phase happens, he didn't have any dates as of yet. But they will probably follow the lead or somewhat depending on what Virginia is doing with their state parks. But that's where they stand right in health, as far as that's concerned. But they are canvassing all of the Health Districts surrounding the park. Another question that had to do with contact tracing. And contact tracing in our Health District is that we have two teams of at least 12 people each. And these teams receive the lab reports that we receive every day. And they contact the case. They find out from the case who they have been in contact with, close contact, from the two days prior to symptom onset. Now, close contact is defined by Virginia Department of Health as being closer than six feet for more than 10 minutes. And so that person gives all those contacts. Each one of those people are called, they are contacted, and they are told to quarantine for 14 days and to monitor for symptoms. So doing the math, if we have almost 400 cases and an average of five contacts per case, then we are actively following right now over approximately 2,000 people in the Health District. And then the last question that came to me was regarding confirmed versus probable cases in Rappahannock County. And the answer is that VDH does not break down confirmed versus probable cases by county, just by Health District. So if anyone has any questions?
Just to keep this in an organized format, I'll go around and call each board member by name so that in turn we can have any questions addressed. Mr. Parrish?
Oh, yeah, I don't really have any questions. It seems like the incidents, occurrences just arrived into the county. So unfortunately, it looks like it may continue to spread. I don't know, I hope not, but that's the way it looks to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Whitson?
Sure. Thank you very much for joining us today. We know you're busy. I did have a question about the National Park. I was just curious, when you look at, when you look at a community like ours, which has just over 7,000 residents, and then we have literally on our backyard this huge recreation area, we're not unlike many other rural communities in the country or contending with an influx of, in many cases, urban dwellers coming into our rural areas for recreation purposes. If and when Skyline Drive opens and kind of a staged reopening or a staggered reopening of Chatham-Dillon National Park, since you are a public health specialist, my question to you so that we can make informed decisions going forward as the park phases in various stages of opening, if we see like we did in late March and early April, a mass influx of cars and people, and we only have three or four stores and gas stations open, and many of those people enter those stores, to what extent does that scenario play badly for a community like ours in terms of increased cases of COVID-19? Is it somewhat a neutral effect? Or does it make no difference at all? I was just curious to get your opinion on that because we're going to, we're obviously going to be under pressure from many people in our community to continue to ask the federal government to keep the park closed.
Yeah. Yes. Thanks for that question because really paying attention to the counties that are affected is what led to the park closing when it did. And you guys were a big mover in that. And the park told us as the Health Directors that they needed some, one, just one Health Director to make that call and make that recommendation. And listening to you in Madison County is what led me to write a letter to them. And I think it really certainly needs to be looked at.
We appreciate it.
Very closely before they move on to that. As far as whether that will be neutral, negative, or it's never going to be positive. But I think it might be, just in my personal opinion, it might be more neutral than we think. Just because the disease is here already and you are probably, people are probably more likely going to be picking it up from, as they go around with their neighbors and other folks within their community who have been exposed and are now cases than they would be from folks visiting from, out of the county. Obviously, it's very difficult to quantify any of that. But it would certainly serve the businesses to make sure that they are enforcing any distancing rules that they can, like they should be doing already.
Really good answer. I really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
You bet.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Karchner, I am my restaurant owner in Rappahannock County. And today, the governor was supposed to let folks know if they could begin to slowly reopen with certain guidelines. I'm wondering if our governor is working with you on those decisions and if you know anything that could help the businesses of Rappahannock be better prepared for when that, the option to slowly reopen occurs.
Yes. We're very sensitive to our restaurants here in the district. And I'm assuming that the governor is speaking right now or started at 2:00 with his press conference. And what we will do as soon as we get those guidelines, our environmental health team, one that is, the team members that are left over not helping with contact tracing, will be out and communicating directly with all the restaurants to help them and assist them in phasing that opening up as safely but as quickly as possible.
Thank you. It'll take us a little bit to get ready to open, so we just need as much notice as we can have.
Yes, we will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
I think most of my questions have been answered, but I did have a question about the seven cases. If we had any idea of how those seven cases came about, how they may have contracted the disease? So if we're following up on it properly?
Yes, we do follow up on each one of those and have identified, I believe, in all of the cases where their exposure occurred. And it seems, at least at this point in time, almost all the exposures have occurred outside, whether someone is traveling or working somewhere else and coming back to the community. But we may have one or two cases that have now been from exposure to a case within Rappahannock County, just as it is throughout the entire district. So there is a little bit of community spread that we're seeing already. But most of them obviously occurred at the beginning by people working elsewhere.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Thank you, Dr. Karchner. And I just wanted to thank you also for joining us today. And my main question and concern, I think Kevin Williams addressed it over the weekend, our emergency services manager, which was that, you know, we hear how very devastating this virus is for assisted living facilities. And he said he had already been in touch with you regarding the concerns for those facilities within the county.
Yes. Yes, we have members of our team that at least once a week and sometimes more are in contact with all of our assisted living facilities and our long-term care facilities and our nursing homes throughout the district, making sure that they're following the appropriate procedures when they're working with their clients, as well as making sure they have the proper and appropriate personal protective equipment as they work with them as well. And we also, at that same time, our team is asking the questions and canvassing these facilities, making sure that they are screening their employees and screening their residents or owners as well, so we can get a jump on that effort too.
Thank you, Dr. Karchner. Does anyone have anything else?
I just wanted to thank you again for joining us today, Dr. Karchner, for the outstanding job that you and your team are doing for our County and Health District as we navigate this COVID-19 pandemic and for continuing to keep us updated with written communication and for joining us today. And I know it's been a very trying time. Anything we can do to support you and your team, please just let us know.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for having me on.
Thank you very much. Mr. Curry, did you have anything today?
No, ma'am. Thank you all for the excellent questions. And I really appreciate, Dr. Karchner, for being available.
Again, this is an agenda item. It's sort of open-ended. And I just want to make sure that every board member has a chance to address their concerns as we navigate the pandemic. And I just wanted to kind of kick off the discussion. And I know a lot of the facilities, as they're being presented with these challenges, are undergoing what I've seen called deep cleaning. And I just wondered, I wondered if we had had any of that sort of thing done or if we were contemplating having any deep cleanings done.
Our county office buildings, we have not performed any deep cleaning. Each county office building has been provided with supplies to touch up the cleaning that's done by our staff. Some county offices have decided to not have their buildings cleaned by outside staff and to take care of cleaning themselves just as a way to reduce the comings and goings of different people. Fire rescue is a different situation. And of course, they are heavily involved in decon all the time in their apparatus. And it's my understanding that they are routinely deep cleaning their apparatus. Mr. Williams could provide more in written form at another time.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Frazier, did you have any questions or other comments regarding this agenda item?
I do not.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson.
I'm sorry, I'm always muted, but I'm a six, eight, and 10-year-old, so you'd rather have me muted than not. No, I think I'm good. I think we're currently in the best shape we can be with the actions we've taken today. So let's hope these cases.
so let's hope these cases stay down.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. I hope they feel better soon. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, thank you. Not really. I'm in, ma'am, looking forward to when the park would open back up for bicycles and hikers, so help people get out, give them exercise in the fresh air. And so hopefully that's not too far off. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Okay, I think that then wraps up the COVID-19 update. That takes us back to the e-public comment portion of the agenda, as we were starting to undertake as we were joined by Dr. Karchner. And similar to the rules for the public hearing, if you wish to participate in the public comment period, have we received anything, written comments or phone calls for this portion of the meeting, Mr. Curry?
Yes, I received one item by email that I'm prepared to read.
Okay. So I guess go ahead and read that into the record at this time, and then we'll kick off the online portion of the public comment.
Okay. The email is from Margaret Bond of Piedmont District and member of the Rappahannock County Broadband Committee, and reads, "Thank you very much, Mr. Curry and members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for this chance to speak with you today. I'm submitting this statement supporting the county's proposed letter accepting an invitation from Rappahannock Electric Cooperative to work with RAC to build a county-wide fiber-optic broadband network. I want to talk about three areas related to this decision. One, work with the county broadband committee. Two, status of broadband coverage in Rappahannock County. And three, why the RAC offer to work with us to build the fiber-optic network is so good for our future. You might remember in October of 2018, the broadband committee, along with the James Center for Innovative Technology, distributed comprehensive survey of broadband coverage in the county, the committee sent this analysis, its analysis of these results and 50-page report to the board of supervisors. This survey analysis is available on the county's website. Based on these survey results, the committee drafted a mission statement which was incorporated into our county's comprehensive plan substantially as to achieve 95% of affordable digital subscriber line, fiber optic, or equivalent broadband transmission service of no less than 25 megabit consistent download speed, 3 megabit consistent upload speed, with low latency for Rappahannock County residents, businesses, schools, government, and volunteer organizations, the list. What RAC is offering this county today, as spelled out in its March 11 letter posted on board docs, is the first step towards this goal, and it is a very big step. Let me explain why. Over the last two years, former broadband committee chairman and supervisor John Losinski, along with Mr. Curry and other board committee members, met with just about every internet service provider, telecommunications entrepreneur, and utility, including RAC, two times, in a four-county region to discuss improving broadband service to Rappahannock County. The results of these discussions were discouragingly similar. The county population is too dispersed, its anchor business is too small, and its rugged geographic features too inhibiting to make purely private investment in improving broadband here economically viable. In the meantime, the broadband committee ran out of every possible grant program, state and federal, to find monies for improving our broadband network. What we found was, found out was this: A majority of these government grants require public-private partnership for an applicant to be eligible. Further, unless the county is willing to commit its own funds towards the broadband plan, its grant application will simply not be competitive with other counties that do. In other words, the county has to put skin in the game, or its grant application will never be scored high enough to be successful. So investing county funds and partnering with an entity like RAC is essential to securing grant funds for improving broadband here. Last January, John Losinski stepped down, and supervisor Debbie Donahue picked up the ball without hesitating, 100% committed to pushing this work forward. Now, the effect of the governor's shutdown orders has highlighted how and why a robust, reliable, universal, affordable broadband system is critical for our county's future. Let me elaborate on just a few areas. K through 12 schools. According to broadband survey, 57% of all Rappahannock County public school students depend on inadequate, expensive, or unlocked reliable broadband internet services, dial-up DSL, satellite, or fixed wireless for online homework assignments. Even before the schools closed, parents complained of having to drive their children to one of the county's Wi-Fi hotspots, such as the public library, so their kids could send in their homework assignments. Now, our school teachers are trying to finish the year's coursework online, and we are seeing up close the effects of inadequate internet capacity. County Public Schools Administrative Services reports a full one and a half of all Rappahannock, one half of all Rappahannock Public School students have had to request laptop or tablet from the school in order to continue their education at home. 33% of those requesting devices had limited or no internet access at all, and had to have their devices preloaded with coursework. Lack of good internet service at home also means these students cannot easily communicate with their teachers, creating what RCPS executive director called significant education inequity in the county school system. Businesses. The broadband survey results show that 93% of the 240-plus businesses in the county rely on the internet for their operations. 57% of these business owners say their internet service is inadequate, expensive, and are unreliable. With the current county shutdown, business owners are losing vital revenue as they try to shift more of their operations online. These declining business tax revenues are now negatively affecting county budget foment for FY 2021, telework. Even before the shutdown, the broadband survey found that 30.7% of residents, about 1,000 households, said they would like to telework but are unable to do so due to low bandwidth. This situation was described in a letter at the last board supervisor's budget meeting from a Swinler Hollow resident who could only get satellite service and could not telework because of insufficient bandwidth capacity. Now, with even more businesses and students trying to work online, the current internet capacity is even more overloaded and the signal strength unreliable. Telemedicine and telehealth. The average age of residents in Rappahannock County is 59, making it one of the oldest populations of any surrounding counties. However, at present, very few residents, about 1%, currently engage internet telehealth services. During this current pandemic, many of our senior citizens, our most vulnerable residents, are isolated at home to avoid exposure, like my 90-year-old neighbor who has been shut at home caring for his disabled wife, relying on dial-up internet for communication. Securing adequate broadband capacity to allow expansion of telehealth services clearly essential to meet current and future healthcare needs of our senior neighbors. She says, "My time is up, but I think the case for investing in high-speed fiber-optic broadband network is clear for us all, for all of us." And now, Rappahannock County is in the best position ever to respond favorably to the RAC offer to help make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you for reading that in, Mr. Curry. And that was from Margaret Bond in Piedmont District. I think we all received that via email. And with that, we would open up the online ability to participate in this meeting. All you need to do is go up to the top of your screen. There's three dots in the upper right-hand corner where it will say "more," and then there will be a dropdown, and you will have the option to raise your hand. If you choose to raise your hand in that dropdown, Mr. Curry will be able to identify your advice, who's recognized by the chair, and participate in the public comment portion of this meeting. We do ask that you follow the rules that we would normally ask in person, that you identify yourself by name and the district in which you reside, and that you keep your comments to less than five minutes, and address your comments to the board. And with that, I want to open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Again, it's the upper right-hand portion of the screen where there's three dots and it says "more." It'll have the option underneath there to raise your hand in the dropdown. And if you do that, you can be recognized, identified, and your mic will be entered to participate in the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak?
I guess Dr. Grimsley has raised her hand.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Yes, Dr. Grimsley.
And yes, good afternoon, everybody. I hope you can hear me okay. I just wanted to reiterate a few things since the last we met virtually about what the school system has been doing during this closure. It is included in my report on the agenda, however, I just wanted to say it out loud so for the benefit of people on the call who may not get to that item. Since March, our CPS did not skip a beat. We began our feeding plan immediately, starting on March 16th, one of the first school districts in Virginia, actually just started a feeding program. Since we opened that feeding program, we have served over 10,000 meals to families and businesses. We're giving to students so that they can interact on our distance learning plan. Our CPS did not wait for the state to determine that instruction would continue, but we immediately sent home learning packets with students on March 13th, as well as launched our distance learning plan right after two weeks of reaching out to students and families to understand their technological needs. Since last we met, we were so very pleased to learn that we were selected and received a national award by the United States Department of Education, the Green Ribbon School Award. This recognition was given to only 11 school districts in the entire country, but we're very proud to be our Rappahannock school district by the Virginia Department of Education for our innovation in efforts to reduce environmental impact and cost, through health and wellness of students, and inclusion of sustainability education throughout the curriculum. Last Friday, with school launched Hero Day, we honored our cafeteria staff through online media blasts, as well as internal recognitions. Our cafeteria staff, led by food service director Mandy Butler, truly are heroes in this incident. Speaking of heroes, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. Although we're celebrating a little differently this year, I hope you do reach out to the teachers of Rappahannock County and let them know how much you appreciate what they're doing. They really, literally had created the educational platform in two weeks. And they're doing a phenomenal job, reaching out to every single student and reaching every family. The graduating class of 2020 had an event today that was not graduation, I want to clarify that. What it was, was a cap and gown pickup event put on by Justin's. So the seniors were able to pick up their caps and gowns, and we got some information from the seniors for their post-graduation plans and to create our graduation program. We are planning a traditional ceremony, or as close to one as we can get, for July. But we have to watch the restrictions and things to see how that's going to look. We surveyed all our parents and our family, and that's what they wanted to do. It very well may be we have to modify those means of social distancing of graduation ceremony at a later date. So we'll keep everyone posted, and yes, all the board of supervisors are always invited to our graduation, so stay tuned. Let's see. Throughout the month, we want to shower our seniors with love. We're having a card drive. If you'd like to write a note to one of our seniors or all of our seniors, you can drop those off, cards in envelopes or notes in envelopes, and let us know who you want them sent to, and we're happy to postage those for you and label one of the addresses. Let's see. Please remember also, to apply for school, we have a step end, a deadline, 20th. Delivery Grant First Step, collaboration with our CCLC, Baby Bear Daycare, and Bell Beat at this time, and Hearthstone as well. So that is continuing, but we need those applications to roll in. And kindergarten registration is happening now virtually, so please contact the elementary school on Tuesdays or Thursdays for digital appointments or to schedule drop-off documents. And finally, I'll close to say that please realize that while we completely understand this unstable financial situation of the county, this high-performing, award-winning school system will need every resource possible to stay that way, especially considering the academic needs that will be very prevalent and evolving. The administration worked extremely hard to build the school board priorities already into a tight and trend budget that came in $95,000 less than last year's county asked. The BOS has already cut another $75,000, and the state has uncharted what we estimate to be about $72,000, with another $185 being placed into contingency. This is the potential for an overall cut of $427,000 in a time when we need these funds the most. Please consider passing the budget that was advertised for public hearing. If you do go forward with the contingency plan, then please be very clear about what will allow us to access these funds. For instance, if quarter one and quarter two come in at or above projection, then will you release the contingency? Or if the state releases the SOQ-raised funds, will you release at least enough to make the 2% work? We give these guidelines upfront so we can better prepare for what is going to be the most challenging academic year in history for our CPS. Thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. And I think I can safely speak on behalf of the whole board and congratulate you hardly on your Green Ribbon Award. That was a great, earth-based prize to see that you all had done that, and to thank you for your continued hard work, even during this shutdown, and also how much we are looking forward to graduation in July. And of course, as always, we will do everything we can to fund the school as best we can. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm not seeing any other hands at this moment.
All right, last chance, anyone wishing to speak? There's three dots on the upper right-hand side of your screen. There's the dropdown option up there. And if you signal, raise your hand, Mr. Curry can see your device, and you will be identified and unmuted.
Paige's iPhone has raised its hand.
All right. If you could unmute that mic, please. Mr. Glanny?
Yes, Paige Glanny, Jackson District. One of the beauties of this Zoom is I'm able to scroll through the news while you are meeting. Evidently, Governor Northroom just said that May 14th may be the start of phase one of beginning reopening. Just thought you might want to know that.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Glanny. It has been very challenging to conduct this meeting today, knowing that there is a lot going on simultaneously in the world, which we would like to be aware. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, Todd Summers. Todd's mic is unmuted.
Good afternoon. This is Todd Summers. I'm a resident of Piedmont. I'm also the chief of Sperryville Volunteer Rescue Squad and a member of the broadband committee. I just wanted to second the letter that was sent in by Margaret, supporting the board supervisor's action to signify support for the RAC plan to build up broadband. It's a tremendous opportunity for us, and really just wanted to highlight that there is no other way for us to get the kind of extensive broadband coverage that would be available with a RAC partnership. So hope that works out for us, hope you're able to move in the affirmative. Thanks very much.
I'm seeing no other hands at this time. And I need to...
...this meeting, and that moves us to agenda item F2, in what normally would be the consent agenda, but we kind of took that apart when we approved the agenda, so that would take us to the accounts payable portion of this meeting. Mr. Curry, if you would, can you set for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. The accounts payable includes four separate check runs this month. The normal mid-month check run of April 15th for a total of $48,121.11. Then a follow-up mid-month check run on April 21st for $150. That was for containers, waste containers that were renting from Fok here that had a due date by the end of the month. May 4, a normal end-of-month check run for $190,399.74. And then another May 4 check run that was actually run this morning for $3,961.11. That is for first payment to Comcast for the capital one-time cost and operating cost for the fiber connection between our sheriff's office, Fok here 91 Center, Culpeper 91 Center, and eventually our two radio towers. The invoice information had an incorrect P.O. box number, so it never made it to us. We were able to get it last minute. It's actually due three days ago, which is why we quickly got the check cut this morning and added to this agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Do I have any questions or emotion in regards to the accounts payable presented in today's packet? Well, no one else is going to make a motion regarding to accounts payable, I would make a motion that we approve the accounts payable as presented in the packet today. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue.
And Ms. Smith, let me, let me, uh, clear, make it clear that there were no Bragg-Wan litigation invoices in this check run.
Thank you for clarifying that. That was, um, that was mentioned by, uh, the Treasurer's Office when they sent some bill breakouts to me, um, so there was no, uh, payment to Walker Jones this month, and that it is not necessary for us to make declarations. I understand that. Is that correct, Mr. Curry?
There's a payment for the rent for the Commissioner of Accounts, but not for litigation.
Very good, thank you. Uh, that takes us to the roll call, though. Uh, Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you, that concludes the accounts payable item, and that takes us into supplemental appropriations, Item F3, which we had trimmed, uh, to only include the CSA portion of supplemental appropriations. If you would, uh, queue that up for us, please, Mr. Curry.
Uh, yes. Uh, included in the packet is detailed information relative to this particular request. Uh, the Children's Services Act, uh, provides mandated services to children or community who are in need of, uh, services relative to, um, all sorts of things that they aren't able to get from their, their home place. This county budgeted $1.3 million this year, and as expenses have approved, it has proven not to be adequate. Uh, this is very costly to all localities and, uh, is a routine item for counties to be discussing with their, uh, their General Assembly representatives on ways that we can be more efficient in this area. Uh, with all that said, um, if supplemental appropriation is not meant, made, we will be in an overspend situation by the end of this month. Uh, it would have to curtail services, which I think would have dire consequences both to the children and possibly to the county financially. This form up on the screen right now identifies, uh, that the funding for this is being provided by way of a transfer, uh, but it's from one department to another, so it's technically a supplemental appropriation because you appropriate by department. Uh, the contracted care of juveniles line, that's, uh, the line that the board previously added funding to for the post-dispositional program. Uh, the child intended to go into that program was unable to do so, and is one of the reasons why the CSA expenditures is, is rather high right now. So this transfers the post-D money over to CSA. And then the other is the regional jail expenses, which I were previously reported to the board after going through the true-up process. Uh, we've completed paying all of our obligations for the year and actually received a refund check, and, uh, a portion of that amount, $21,258, is being proposed to transfer to CSA. Uh, the nature of CSA is that it's 41.98% local expenditure with a balanced state, so you can see in the form, the transfer showing up as a negative expenditure, the revenue showing up from the state for the, the 41.98 split, uh, at $92,000 with a total of $160,000 increase of budget capacity in the CSA, uh, department or fund. Um, it is very likely we will have to look at this again in June, and to do that, uh, will require a public hearing because, uh, we will be pushing up against the 1% supplemental appropriation limit, uh, after which a public hearing is necessary. There is, there are additional funds in the regional jail account that should be able to be transferred to accommodate that, even though there, those wouldn't add to your supplemental appropriation in the 1%. The new state revenue would, so technically trips that, that lever, and we'll have to have that public hearing. Uh, but this amount will shore you up through the end of May.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. So you're looking for, uh, if I understand correctly, a motion in a second to approve supplemental appropriation as you described this afternoon?
Yes, as, as indicated on the form on the screen, the supplemental appropriation form.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion regarding this request?
Oh, make that. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, lady, sorry.
I would make that motion that we support, um, the request for supplemental appropriation for the Children's Services Act.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, I will make the second.
Thank you very much, I have a motion in a second. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. That takes us to Item I1, the Budget Work Session. I know we had quite a few, uh, pieces in play after our last discussion, I was wondering if you could walk them through for us, please, Mr. Curry.
Uh, yes, uh, first let me say, attached to this agenda item is the original presentation from the board meeting, uh, in April, the board's, uh, proposed budget, and a revised budget document in, uh, padded by 200504. Uh, this revised document with all the detailed lines includes the changes that were discussed by the board on April 27th, and those changes in essence are identified, uh, in the bullets. Uh, and reiterating what was previously discussed, was a reduction in revenue of sales tax, uh, forecast, reduction in revenue of, of meals and lodging tax forecast. I, I also noted here that between the county administrator's proposed budget and the board's proposed budget in now, it also eliminates the additional 2 cent tax levy contemplated for the FIRE levy fund. And then within expenses, shifting several expenses to board supervisors' contingency such that they would be frozen until the board is able to identify, uh, revenue streams and how, uh, strong those revenue streams are relative to forecast. They include the $80,000, uh, funding for the 2% bonus that was, uh, originally contemplated by the General Assembly, uh, but now is, um, frozen by the, the governor. I note that $90,000 of salary increases were already completely removed from the budget for the county staff. $185,000 of the remaining requests from RCPS for raises is moved to contingency and frozen on top of the $75,000 raise funding that was removed from the budget. A $10,000, uh, county attorney, uh, requested raise is shifted to contingency, and then $228,472, the value of the proposed transfer to the FIRE Services Fund, uh, to support, um, Pay DMS, is shifted to contingency to protect against low revenues. Uh, in addition, $141,970, uh, from your pay-as-you-go capital is frozen in a capital holding account and only to be released upon, uh, authorization by the board, which would normally be the case anyways because the board needs to make, uh, awards for purchases greater than $10,000. In total, since the county administrator's proposed budget, it's over $1 million that have been either removed from the budget or frozen in the budget. Uh, the only other thing I want to state is that even with the $228,000, um, shift of the transfer from the, uh, board of supervisors, from the, uh, FIRE Service Fund to the, um, board contingency, it leaves funds in the FIRE Service Fund for contingency in the amount of $71,528, uh, that would, that are already there without the transfer. And together, those two numbers equated to the $300,000 total contingency, uh, that was included in the, uh, budget that was advertised for public hearing. Hopefully that was clear enough, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Um, I'll just go around to each supervisor in case you have any, uh, thoughts or questions regarding the, uh, changes again to this budget document. Uh, Mr. Parrish, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I do not.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Uh, I'm just, uh, in light of Dr. Grimsley's comments, I, I just want to say that I'm very sensitive to the fact that our, our last budget work session, um, reacting to what I think is a pretty serious picture, um, especially on local tax revenue, that we had to make some adjustments and some, some big items, including, um, teacher pay, pay raise funding went into contingency, so I would like to say to Dr. Grimsley and the public school community that I, as of the time remaining before we adopt this budget, I certainly recognize that we do need to articulate very clearly what benchmarks we will use, um, as we analyze, uh, revenue month to month, uh, that will trigger our potential release from contingency of funds that have been frozen. So I don't want, I don't want it to sound insensitive or, or overly focused on, um, being pessimistic about our revenue projections, I just want to be cautious. Um, and being cautious, I just, at least from where I sit, will, uh, try to be as thoughtful as possible about articulating to everyone who is potentially at the losing end of the, um, the contingency-related decisions we're having to make right now to hedge against, um, projected, uh, projected downward trend in revenue. I just want to articulate that, uh, we will keep you all informed, and we will try to be as clear as possible on if and when, uh, funds can be moved out of, of frozen status.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Um, Ms. Donahue, did you have any, uh, thoughts or comments on the budget changes?
I too, uh, agree that the schools have obviously had to deal with a situation that none of us ever thought would happen, and they bounced as well as any of the schools in our area, uh, and somewhat quicker than most of them to make sure that the kids were taken care of, and I greatly appreciate all the efforts of all of the staff, um, but I concur that, uh, at this time with the risk of loss of revenue and, um, pretty much a freeze on all salaries in the county, I, I just don't think it would be appropriate for us to do anything but, uh, watch and see what happens, and then make sure that it is clear when that trigger, uh, hits, that the funds, what funds will be released. Just want to communicate as well as we can, uh, with the school system. And I thank you, Mr. Gary, for all of your efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Um, Mr. Frazier?
No, I, I think we've worked on it, uh, about as much as we can and have a pretty good understanding of the only thing, we don't really, you know, know exactly what our revenue stream is going to be, that's why we're having to be as cautious as we are.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier, and I would just concur, I think that, uh, we continue to make, um, our schools a priority, um, and to, you know, ensure we can get as much funding to them as, as quickly as we can. Um, you know, I, I wish that we were in a more stable time and we could do everything that we would like to do, um, but until the picture becomes a little clearer for us, um, we do have to build some money to the contingency. Um, I, I think that, uh, keeping, uh, an open line of communication with our peers on the school board is key, um, and knowing we are all working toward a common purpose, and I've said it before, I, I can't think of a group that I would like to work with more than the school board to make sure we succeed for our schools. Um, and so knowing that we are working in cooperation with them, I wish that there was a way we could be, um, move forward without having things in contingency, but that's, that's just a way we have to hold out at this time. Um, and that's really all I have to say, except to thank Mr. Curry. I, I know it's been a very challenging year to, um, negotiate the numbers on the budget. Any year where certainly we don't want to ask for a tax increase, it's going to be a tough year for Las Oats, and, um, it's been a very challenging year to pull these numbers together, and I'm very proud of the work the board has done. Um, and, and, and thank you to staff for all their very hard work as well.
Um, depending, uh, thank you very much. Depending on your next agenda item, uh, then what I will plan to do is for your, uh, May 11, uh, budget meeting, prepare the necessary resolutions for, uh, budget adoption, uh, appropriation and setting the tax rate that includes, everything incorporated into the budget is presented here, and trues up the insurance costs, uh, with, based on the provider that you select, and any, uh, change in the total cost to balance the budget, I'll just make the slight adjustment in the amount allocated for pay-as-you-go capital, which, uh, before was $150,000, and you see I had to reduce that to $141,970 just to balance revenues with expenditures. I'll adjust that a little bit, uh, based on the assumptions that were made in the, um, in the budget document, which was a 5% increase over last year, and, uh, relate that to whichever way your decision goes on the next agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Do you think it would be possible, and I know this is challenging, but in the, in the course of, uh, negotiating these last few details in the budget, uh, could you put down sort of a punch list for what we would need, uh, to see happen, to know that we could, um, release those contingency funds to the school for raisins, and, and what, what expectations, uh, they should have for when that does happen?
Uh, I can, uh, prepare a roadmap. I don't think that it should be included in the approving resolutions, but it could be a-
Correct.
-parallel, uh, discussion and document, and I would suggest that it'll be a living document, as conditions on the ground change, uh, may impact how the board sees that moving forward, but I agree, giving as much certainty to the school board as possible is desirable. Uh, just certainty these days is hard to come by.
I appreciate that very much, and I think that will make for a better social relationship of, you all know what the goals are in achieving those goals, and then, uh, having the correct expectations when we get there, I, I think would be a real key to succeed. So I, I know I would appreciate if you could pull those details together. Anyone else? All right. That takes us on to our next agenda item, old business, I2, insurance provider discussion for property liability, et cetera. Uh, I know we've had this on a couple of agendas lately, if you could, uh, remind us of this, uh, agenda item, please, Mr. Curry.
Uh, yes, uh, you were briefed at your last meeting of the competing proposals, um, and those proposals are summarized in the, uh, chart that is provided on board docs. Uh, you can see the latest values provided that provide as much of an apples-to-apples comparison on cost. Uh, it's my opinion that from a service perspective, uh, both of these, uh, uh, insurance pools are more than capable of providing local government's coverage. Uh, Mr. Goff and I believe that, uh, given the, uh, endorsement language for the public officials' liability optional, uh, coverage, uh, we believe it's stronger from VACOR, and between that being stronger and the pricing being stronger, we believe that it is, uh, a reasonable decision to, uh, move forward and change your insurer from VRSA to VACOR. If the board would like to do that, you must do that through adoption of a resolution, which is attached to this agenda. That resolution, uh, which is the last attachment, authorizes the chair to execute the member agreement and the two-member agreement addendums for workers' compensation and line of duty act. If you were to stay with VRSA, you would not have to do that because the county has already, um, entered into that agreement with, uh, VERSA or BNLI P back in 2014. Um, so in that case, it would just need a signature from me on the renewal document. Uh, but this resolution is required if the board would like to, uh, move forward with VACOR. Uh, I can answer questions, and, um, I believe, um, Stephanie Heitzlman is on the, in the meeting, if there are any specific questions about, uh, VACOR, uh, she may be able to answer them as a representative from that, uh, agency.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, and I'll just move around the table at this time in case, uh, any supervisors have any questions or comments regarding these coverage options. Uh, Mr. Parrish?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Um, I don't, I, I, I know the direction, I'd like to get going, um, and I appreciate Mr. Curry and Mr. Goff and all the work they've done in doing this apples-to-apples comparisons, it makes our job a heck of a lot easier, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Now, I keep, uh, earlier discussions we've had made it clear, uh, from the finest information that we've been provided, and thank you for all the information that, uh, Mr. Goff and Mr. Curry put together.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier?
I'm, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. I guess, I guess my only lingering question that I don't know if I've ever heard the answer to is, is do we have, and this can be directed to Mr. Goff or Ms. Heitzelman for joining us today, in the event we should ever be on the receiving end of a federal lawsuit, do we have adequate coverage in that circumstance?
That depends on what type of federal lawsuit it is. But by and large, most federal lawsuits you're going to run across are going to be EEOC types. That's the most common. And we do have not a whole lot of, of, of coverage in that area. Correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie, but that's one usually what's going to be like a sexual harassment suit, and those are generally excluded. You know, there might be a racial discrimination type of suit or, or, you know, whatnot, those kind of, those kind of things. The only other types of federal cases that we, that we run into are those where mainly constitutional officers, i.e. the sheriff, is being sued for a 1983 violation of someone's civil rights, and that's not handled by our insurance anyway. That's handled by Division of Risk Management as part of the Treasury Department. So I hope that answers your question. I mean, there's conceivably other types of federal litigation, for instance, pollution, and we're not covered for that. Those are specific exclusions under both policies of BML and Bay Corp.
I have unmuted Ms. Heitzelman's mic, and she has her hand raised, so I'll invite her to go ahead and speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to indicate that we do have a coverage limit for claims that are of non-monetary claim that would include the office civil rights and the EEO complaint prior to them becoming a lawsuit. Just wanted to indicate that.
Thank you, Ms. Heitzelman. Does, does anybody else have any questions, or we could take a motion in regards to this matter at this time? Is it mine to make a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Kira Woodson. I will gladly make a motion that we adopt the resolution selecting Bay Corp as our insurance provider. I'm referring to the resolution that Mr. Curry just raised on the screen that I believe is intended to authorize you to enter into a member agreement with Bay Corp.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. And do I have a second for this motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. So I'll be looking for a roll call vote on this one, please. Do you need anything additional to take this vote, Mr. Curry?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
An aye also. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Heitzelman, for joining us this afternoon. That takes us to the new business portion of the agenda. That takes us to J. One, being raised the ordinance, meals and lodging tax, April 20th, 2020 due date extension. Mr. Curry, if you could lead this discussion for us, please?
Yes. There's been some discussion from some of your local businesses that pay into, for meals and lodging tax. That's a, a tax that is set locally and it's optional by the locality. And, but the taxes are trust taxes, and that means that when somebody goes in to buy a meal, a part of their pay to that restaurateur is, is a tax that's held in trust for the county. As soon as it's remitted to the, to the restaurant, it's a county dollar. So in that case, the, the county can't waive those taxes that were already collected, but they are paid to the county quarterly. And the most recent due date was April 20th, 2020. And for various reasons during this event, some businesses who, who were on reduced capacity were essentially closed, may not have had the appropriate staff available to compile the information to pay their taxes for these trust taxes before April 20th. And when that happens pursuant to your ordinance, penalties and interest accrue. And they have been really, no fault of their own, just a victim of circumstance. There was a thought that the county potentially waived those penalties and interest, and the treasurer reviewed the sections of code and suggested that the easiest way to do that is actually to extend the deadline that would have normally been April 20th, 2020, and to extend it to June 20th, 2020. Well, those deadlines are fixed in ordinance, so the only way to change them would be to change the ordinance. And so to do so, you can, the Board of Supervisors can enact an emergency ordinance without public hearing, if deemed appropriate, or you can advertise a public hearing in the paper for two weeks, et cetera, and then have that ordinance be set and fixed forever. As the case is, with this recommendation to extend from April 20th to June 20th, the period of extension is less than 60 days. And so if the board adopts an emergency ordinance that extends that due date, it will, it will have the effect of eliminating those fees, penalties, and interest for those businesses that were unable to pay on time. And then after the 60 days runs, the emergency ordinance will fade away and no longer be effective and no longer be needed because it won't be remain relative to the extension. So the attached ordinance provides the changes for both the meals and the lodging, which is why there are two different sections. And also, there's a, a portion of the ordinance that allows the seller to retain 3% of the amount of any payment due to the county if they pay on time. What this ordinance identifies is that that 3% is only able to be retained if the payment was made on or before April 20, and it's not impacted by the waiver, the extension and essential waiver of the penalty and interest. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. And to move this forward, a board member would have to move adoption of this emergency ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And, and just to expedite this, and because this did originate in my district and to facilitate the purposes of discussion today, I would just thank staff for working on this so quickly. I think this will benefit a lot of businesses that are maybe trying to decide what bill to pay first. This may help them make some difficult decisions and give them some breathing room. And so I would make a motion that we adopt the emergency ordinance as presented in the packet today. I would look for a second so we could have some discussion on this matter, please. Do I have a second?
Kira Woodson also seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. And I would just ask everyone if they had any comments or discussion regarding this emergency ordinance that's in the packet. Mr. Parrish?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue.
Aye, I like it.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson.
And Madam Chair, I appreciate you leading the way on this. I think it's a, it's one of the small things we can do to help people, so it's great that we're getting it done. But like, like, it's not something we need to address right now, but I will admit this was one ordinance I had not studied very carefully after, after joining the board at the beginning of the year, and I was somewhat puzzled by this, this, this 3%, 3% timeline engineer, and as some later date, and some, maybe we can talk about that. I discussed it with Mr. Curry, and, you know, it's, it's, it appears to be some form of incentive, but it, it amounts to business owners being able to retain some amount of trust taxes that they've collected on the actual locality, so that puzzles me a little bit. But that's for, for another discussion.
And to clarify, Mr. Woodson and I were able to track this back to Code of Virginia language that authorizes it. So it's legal, it's just whether it's appropriate or not for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. And thank you, Mr. Woodson. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of this resolution, but the, I imagine that 3% is similar to the small token that the Virginia state sales tax gives the collector back. It, it helps a little bit for the, the cost of the collection and the paperwork associated with it. That's why we do it. Or that was the emphasis behind it.
Yeah, Mr. Frazier, I, I thought the same thing because it, it's not a lot, and I think in the grand scheme of things, it's really not a lot. And I assume that it has something to do with an indirect reimbursement for administrative overhead expenses, so thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, that, that was the thought behind it, but it, I mean, it's, it is very small.
Yeah, it's probably $10,000 a year or something. Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. All right, with that, we have a motion and a second, so I'll just conduct the roll call vote. Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
An aye also. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to the review and consider broadband from Rapid Hennick Electric Cooperative. And Mr. Curry, I think you have some inquiries prepared on this, and I, I know, being our representative broadband committee and Ms. Donahue, that you may have something to add to that as well.
Yes, I'll just give a quick roadmap of what is attached to the agenda, and the narrative here is, is pretty clear. The Rapid Hennick Electric Cooperative sent this letter to my attention on March 11th, and it identified a significant change in their past stance relative to providing broadband to the premises or home. As others noted, or I read earlier, the broadband committee has been in contact with REC over the last couple of years to understand their intentions relative to the fiber network that they're currently deploying to their own assets, and to encourage them to be involved further in our communities as have other electric cooperatives. So we are very excited to receive this letter. And in the letter, they note that they are interested in seeking out some pretty big grant opportunities, the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, Reconnect America Fund, and then the local Virginia opportunities through Go Virginia and VADI, Virginia Telecommunications Initiative. And, and those, most of those require a partnership between a locality and a private entity. But their letter has boiled down to requesting two things, and that is to seek whether our locality would have an interest in participating in federal or state broadband grant applications, and whether we would be willing to offer financial support to an REC facilitated broadband expansion project in our jurisdiction. So those are the two fundamental questions that REC requested. And they wanted that information back by the middle of April. Of course, that was sent out before COVID-19 really ramped up, and there was some communication and back and forth, and ultimately REC released this email, which extended the April 15th date to May 15th. And that's why it's critical now for the board to be considering this matter, because they are backed up and they, they even told us that they can extend further and still make the decisions they need to be made before the big grant opportunities come along. So attached here is a, a letter for, draft letter presented for consideration of the Board of Supervisors. This draft letter was prepared through a group of people to, led by Supervisor Donahue and members of the broadband committee, and I helped sum. And basically, it answers those two questions in the REC letter. One, are we interested in participating? And two, if so, are we interested in providing any funds? And so this, this letter unequivocally says, yes, we want to participate. And then it goes on to answer the question of, is the board willing to, and community willing to invest? And, and of course, that, if this is draft and subject to review and discussion by the board, this letter contemplates that the Board of Supervisors would commit $100,000 for capital or grant match requirements dependent on REC's final service covering offering. So if REC were to provide countywide coverage, then that level investment may be appropriate. But if REC were to provide coverage to a small corner of the county, then that probably would not be appropriate. And in addition, it identifies that there has already, there have already been identified private partners who have pledged $200,000 in support of the program. And so that together is a substantial commitment. There are letters attached to this agenda item from the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, the PATH Foundation, I believe it's, I'll have to go back and look, Fagus, Fagus Foundation?
I'm not sure.
Or we'll look at that in a second. But in addition to that capital, it lays out three opportunities of potential continued revenue support dependent on the service that is provided. And the Code of Virginia was recently changed, I believe in the 2019 session, to allow service districts to be created for the purpose of partnering with a private broadband provider. Those service districts, and we're still working through the details, may allow the Board of Supervisors to implement a layered tax that would be held and restricted only for broadband. Your citizens may see that as a reasonable solution for their dollars to be invested in an REC partnership that brought fiber to the home. Also notes that there are other regional and local foundation grants that we could help REC tap, and then continue to look at the possibility of any tax abatement for REC, and that is caught, conditioned by that it would have to be as permitted by law. So REC does play, pay taxes on their installed infrastructure. We'd have to very carefully look and see if any of those taxes could be waived in exchange for their commitments to bring broadband to the community. So this is a draft letter, and it's available for board consideration. With that, I guess I'll turn it over to Supervisor Donahue to add anything that I may have missed.
Thank you very much for that. I think, one, I want everyone to know that I've reached out to committee members as well as the board to try and make sure that everybody understands what we're committing to, which is basically saying we want to partner, but we need more information. And I think the feedback has been pretty positive and somewhat exciting, especially from a committee that's been frustrated for probably two years with efforts to try to find a partner that was, you know, strong enough to be able to go out and do this basically on their own with us supporting financially. And so this opportunity was one that I have pretty much heard from everyone, they're very excited about. Mr. Wazinski called and said, wow, what a difference a few months makes. And I said, absolutely, this is an opportunity we don't want to miss. And I think Ms. Bond did an excellent job summarizing how frustrated and the efforts that the committee had gone through in the past two years. But until we found a partner that wanted to play in, you know, Rapid Hennick County, knowing our, our, our land and finance concern has been about it. And one thing that is very true about our company is they know where our house is. And so they know Rapid Hennick County very well. And if we can make this work, I think it is the partner they've been, we've been searching for, and this is the time that we need to jump on this.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Now, now just look to my fellow board members for any questions or comments regarding this, unless you'd like to make a, a motion in regards to this right now, Ms. Donahue.
I'd be honored to make a motion to accept the letter as written and to send it to Mr. T. with Rapid Hennick Electric immediately for their May 20th board meeting.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second it, Ron Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. So we have a motion and a second, so let's hear from everyone for discussion purposes, please, at this time. Mr. Frazier, did you have anything to add?
No, I just, I think that this is a very good thing for us to, to try and get in at the ground floor instead of, you know, missing the vote as we've done on things over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue, did you have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson.
Let's take full advantage. It's, it's a great development, so thanks, everyone, So, thanks, everyone, who put all this together so quickly, including Ms. Donahue and Ms. Bond.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, it looks like a good way to get the ball rolling, so.
Thank you. Thank you. And this is Christine Smith. I just wanted to reiterate what I know has been a long road for the Broadband Committee and hearing in my time on the board that our main challenge has been finding someone to partner with in this exercise and hearing that in our board meetings and also hearing it in training sessions, most notably last November at the Bay Co. training in their rural broadband breakout session. That is a big, a big challenge. And, you know, it's the kind of thing you hope you don't have to build from the ground up as a locality, that you hope you can find someone to partner with to realize these, the needs and figure out the best build out, especially in a rural area like this where we have challenges with depotency and sparse population. It will be great to have a partner like REC, especially what they're getting into, to be able to take on this challenge. So, I'm very pleased to be able to do this business today. And with that, we have a motion and a second, and I'll be looking for a roll call vote. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. I'm glad we were able to get that done today. That takes us to addendum item, the purchase for the NICE logging recorder for 911 and the public radio safety system. Mr. Curry, I'll ask you once again to lead us through this one item.
Yes, first let me explain why it is an addendum item. And that is, we've been pursuing this for some time and attempting to get proper procurement in place. And we thought we had that through a cooperative procurement model through another locality. But as we looked at that more clearly, we determined that it was not acceptable. Then we asked the vendor to see what they could find for state contract or GSA pricing. And as it turns out, the GSA contract price saved us a considerable amount of money over what we were otherwise thinking the price would be. A NICE logging recorder, the company NICE has a single reseller in the state of Virginia. And so, competition is not easy to come by. So, when you go to national model, it seems to be preferable, and that was borne out with better pricing. This particular piece of equipment is found in every 911 center. And the unit we have now is in need of replacement. It is aged and in need of replacement. And we have the opportunity to replace that with a model that will work natively with our new radio system and provide what is very likely life-saving features that are otherwise not available in, on the recorder that we have now that is not compatible in the same way with our new radio system. As the board knows, it's been rather a long odyssey to get the new radio system up and running. But we have a very clear line of sight to that happening in June or July of this year. And we need to be ready for that. And this is one piece of that puzzle, which has been many pieces over the last year, really all slowly coming into, into play and lining up nicely. So, I'm bringing this to the board and asking you to approve the award as presented on the attached, which is to apply digital, which is the Virginia rep, through the GSA contract held by Voice Products. And you can see the details of which are much more detailed than you really need to worry about other than the price, which is $45,772.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And I'll just wonder if any board member has a motion to make in regards to this request?
I'm Debbie Donahue. I'm happy to make a motion to accept the award with the, is it NICE? I think it's very important that we have these professionally done and make sure that they're working appropriately for our first responders.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Now, Mr. Parrish, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, very. Parrish. All right, I have a motion and a second. I'm going to go around once for discussion. Mr. Frazier?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
I'll ready vote.
All right, and I'll just say for, from a public safety perspective, I think this is really critical to get it done, and I'm glad we're doing it. All right, so let's go ahead and vote. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
And Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you, and I also. I believe that takes us through all of our action items for today. There is some information, reports of correspondence included in the packet. Is there anything else we need to do today, Mr. Curry?
You have an opportunity to, in the matters presented by the board, if there's anything else you want, that would be essential, that you want to task staff with tracking down or mention after everything else that you've been through in the meeting, that would be your opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Just would like to hear from each supervisor. I did have one item under that, under that agenda item. Mr. Frazier, do you have anything to add?
Not that I can remember. I have no notes to that, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue, did you have anything to add in matters under the board?
No, I think I'm fine at this moment. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
No.
Okay. My main item, and I want to keep this brief, I know these long calls can be taxing, is that I believe by, by your contract, you're bound to do your evaluation in the month of June. Is that correct, Mr. Curry?
Yes, it's supposed to be done by the end of June. And you asked me to get that rolling a couple of months ago. And I suggested it probably doesn't meet the essential, essential requirement. But the board could take some actions independent of board meetings and get documents ready for a subsequent meeting. And I'm happy to help in any way you would like to that end.
Thank you. I was just thinking if you could email out that form to everyone for you, since we are contractually obligated to do that in a certain timeframe. That is the only thing that I have to add that I would say is probably essential. Thank you for that.
Yeah, happy to do that.
All right, and if any, if no one has anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish, and a second?
Second, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You.